Good evening. I'd like to call the special meeting of the board to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interest of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Ms. Lee Bowman, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Foteh, would you please call roll?
Ms. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Long.
Here.
Ms. Lemoine.
Here.
Ms. Isar.
Here.
Ms. Rodney.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yeah.
Ms. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White is not with us.
Thank you, Ms. Foteh, and welcome back to Show Med coming from Baton Rouge in the Bessie meeting. And your service on Bessie, we appreciate it. Okay, first item on the agenda is to discuss employee contract negotiations and ratification. Are you going to handle this, Ms. Foteh?
Yes, I would. We could go into executive session and discuss it if you would like, or I could just do...
I'll make a motion now we go into executive session.
Okay, there is a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Ms. Lemoine, to go into executive session to discuss employee contract negotiations and ratification. Is there any... are there any members who'd like to discuss the item to go into executive session? There being none, please cast your votes to go into executive session.
Motion passes. 10-0.
Thank you, Ms. Foteh. We will now go into executive session. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to go into open session. Is there a motion? There's a motion by Mr. Harris, seconded by Mr. Campbell. Discussion on the motion to go into open session. There being none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. We are now in open session. Ms. Foteh.
Okay, tonight on the agenda, we have been in contract negotiations with the SBAE leadership and have come to a tentative agreement. At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Maggie Rousell, who is the president of SBAE, and if Ms. Jack would like to come up as well. She's saying, "Please come up, Ms. Rousell."
It has been a very, you know, intense effort, and I think it's been a very, very good one. We've had a lot of great conversations around what we feel we need to improve and make changes in the contract. And Ms. Rousell has notified me that the SBAE has ratified the contract. So, Ms. Rousell, if you want to make a few remarks. Yeah, so we kind of started this process in March, so it's been, you know, going for a while. I think we both negotiated in very good faith with one another. I mean, obviously, no one walks away like, "Oh, we got everything we ever wanted." But we did bring it to our members, and it was ratified. And so, we're excited for the things that we, you know, were able to negotiate in this new contract. And we're thankful for the raise, you know, and some of the other things that we got. And so, I thank Ms. Foteh for working with us and hearing us out. There were a lot of things to share, so thank you for listening to all of it. And truly, I truly believe taking it into consideration and, you know, negotiating in good faith, so...
Okay, and just to give to the public some of the highlights, you know, it is a four-year contract. And as most people may or may not know, we have had a collective bargaining agreement since 1988. So, we have been through this process multiple times, and each time that we do so, we try to refine it a little bit more, bring it up to date, do what we can in order to make that relationship better and better each time. So, I think really the highlight is that we're able to locally, and this has nothing to do with any state or federal monies. So, locally, we're talking about raising the pay for all of the teachers and certificated personnel on a pay scale of $2,600. For the nine-month support people, $1,300; and the 12-month support people, $1,600. The... there are other adjustments upward in supplements for coaches, for sponsors of different organizations, band directors, choral teachers, the web-based, school-based website administrators as well. And an increase in the pool of money for the voluntary incentive pay. And I think those are basically the highlights that we have in the contract, most of it revolving around whatever pay that we're able to increase with the local monies and to make readjustments in the budget to allow that to happen, so... Okay, so with that in mind, both Ms. Rousell and I would ask that you would consider this for ratification.
Mr. Long.
I'd like to make a motion to ratify, as presented, the employee contract between SBAE and the St. Bernard Parish School Board.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Long, seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Any discussion on the motion to ratify the contract? Just one question, Ms. Rousell. Thank you in the committee for serving. We appreciate it, and thanks to the administration also for their great job of working together cooperatively in a positive manner. Of course, we always wish we...
Could I interrupt one minute?
Yes.
There's one point I forgot that's very important, which is like our bus drivers should know that we were able to increase the rate for the field trips from $9.15 an hour to $15 an hour for inside and $18 an hour for outside trips with three-hour minimums. So, I didn't want them to think that we did not address their need and their consideration, so I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Ms. Foteh. But again, we want to thank you all for the working cooperatively to reach this agreement. And I had a question for you, Ms. Rousell, and the committee. So, was it an overwhelming support of the ratification of the contract?
Yes, I believe it was like around 83%, 84%.
Good.
So, overwhelming, yeah, for sure.
Great. That's good to hear. And we do appreciate all of our employees, certificated, non-certificated, administration, everyone. And we're very fortunate to have so many wonderful employees. And again, we know we wish we had more money even, but, you know, we are glad we were able to reach this agreement in a cooperative manner and in a positive way also. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote on the ratification, please.
Okay, Mr. Campbell.
Four.
Ms. Harris.
Four.
Ms. Jackson.
Four.
Ms. Lee Bowman.
Four.
Ms. Long.
Four.
Ms. Lemoine.
Here.
Ms. Isar.
Here.
Ms. Rodney.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Yeah.
Ms. Warner.
Snowy.
And Ms. White is not with us still.
Thank you, Ms. Foteh. Okay, first item on the agenda is an education committee item. Ms. White is the chair, but she's not here, so I will chair this one. Update on legislative action on the minimum foundation formula. Ms. Foteh.
Okay, I just wanted to give you a quick update on what happened in the legislature with the minimum foundation formula. As you know, each year, the Bessie Board is entrusted to develop a formula for K-12 education and send it over to the legislature. The legislature can only approve it, reject it, but they cannot modify it. So, once that formula is sent over, it needs to be approved or rejected or just not taken up, which is a form of rejection. This particular year, by March 15th, Bessie has the duty to do that. Bessie sent it over prior to March 15th, and then it got mixed up in the legislative process as it always does. In that formula was a provision for a permanent salary increase for all employees for certificated people, a $2,000 increase, and for non-certificated personnel, a $1,000 increase. And the significance of it going through the MFP formula means that it really becomes a permanent pay raise. Because once it's in there, and Bessie keeps it in there each year, then the legislature cannot ever take it away. Because they can either approve the formula and it'll be in there, or reject it and then it reverts back to the prior year and it will be in there from the prior year. So, that is the protection of the MFP, or the Minimum Foundation Program formula. Along with that, there were other provisions for increases in the MFP. So, it was the $2,000, $1,000 pay raise. There was about $60 million set aside for something that our state superintendent wanted called differentiated pay. It was a pot of money that was generated for each school system, and it was generated at $1,000 per classroom teacher. Had nothing to do with librarians, guidance counselors, administrators, people appraisal people. It was just specifically classroom teachers which generated a pot of money. And then, school districts could turn around and decide how to disperse this pot of money to classroom teachers, and it would be dispersed in only one of four categories. That person would have to either have been a highly effective teacher, as designated by the evaluation system from the prior year, would have to possibly have taught in a critical shortage area, as designated by Bessie. And right now, the only critical shortage areas they are designating are middle and high school math, science, and then K-12 special education. So, that's category number two. Category number three is if you taught in an economic... a school where there was greater than 85% of economically disadvantaged students. So, it would have to be on what school that would be. And it would have to go with the latest data the State Department would have. And the fourth area was in teacher leadership positions. So, it would be mentor stipends, teacher leader stipends, teachers that might lead professional learning communities. So, it would be some type of a teacher leadership role. So, you could not take the money and disperse it equally among all of your teachers or any other type of employee. It would have to fit into one of those categories. And you could then make the determination of how much money you wanted to give that person. You could give somebody in a critical shortage area $5,000 more than you would give a teacher teaching right on the side of a different subject. So, the amount of the stipend that you would give would be at the discretion of the school system. You know, it has some pros and it has some cons with that. I don't like the idea of the State Department deciding what your areas of critical shortage are, because that, to me, varies from school system to school system and school to school, to be perfectly honest, if that was one way you wanted to go. I don't like the idea of giving it to highly effective teachers, because I feel there's a lot of subjectivity within that evaluation, and that can be somewhat not equal and fair. So, if we had the money, you know, I would think more around for us, teacher leadership positions, mentors, teacher leaders, those types of individuals. All right, so that was another part of the MFP. It was going to be $60 million generated, and each school system would get a different amount depending upon the number of classroom teachers that they had. Another provision was because there's been no increase in the MFP for a long time, they were making a concession and say, "Well, okay, we'll give you $33 per pupil more than what you get now." So, if we have approximately, I don't know, 7,900... well, that's with the four-year-olds. They wouldn't count. Say 7,400, 7,500 kids, you'd multiply it by $33 and we'd get a little bump on that. It wasn't that much, but it was something. And then, there was only a million and a half in there for some... an internship program that our state superintendent wanted to implement, and it would be just with a very, very small pilot of people. All right, so that's basically what the increases were in the MFP. And you have to also understand that MFP is over a $4 billion state allocation. It's one of the biggest allocations in the General Appropriations Bill. So, it is not something that... I don't even think our legislators like it, because they really have no control over what they can change. They can tell Bessie, "Hey, we want you to put this in it, or this in it, or this in it." So, there's a lot of give and take. All right, so we sent the bill over, and then everybody understands, I think, what has been going on at the state legislature right now, between political parties, between chambers in the legislature. It's been pretty much a free-for-all in terms of how they were going to handle the budget itself. And there was a group of legislators who did not want to increase the budget significantly. They did not want to... there's a spending increase limit that they have that was implemented before the state had a huge influx of funds that we've been having the last few years. So, there's a spending increase cap which was in effect. So, in order for the legislature to spend the money it has, they would have had to vote to raise the cap so that they could disperse these hundreds of millions of dollars that they have that is really being generated, not really just through the federal monies. The state is in a better financial position. So, there was a group of legislators who felt that instead of spending all of this money to save some of the money, but also to pay off some debt from retirement systems. So, you may have heard this story. Well, instead of giving teachers pay raises, then we'll pay off some of the debt from the retirement system, and that way, that might lower the employer contribution rate. And if it lowers the employer contribution rate, that frees up more money locally, and then you can give your own pay raise. Well, there's some long-term validity to some of this, but in the immediate future, it doesn't happen that way. It wouldn't happen for this coming year or any significance in the next two to three years. The... say, for example, the teacher's retirement system will be re-authorizing itself or re-amortizing its debt this next year. So, we should see some movement in that rate. And that initial unfunded liability is supposed to be paid off by the year 2029, at which point the rates are going to be dropping to some extent. So, there... and I had an extensive conversation with Catherine Whitney, who is the CEO, the head of the teacher's retirement system, in terms of how all this interacts and what we could expect. And you're not going to expect much more than a 4% decrease even within the next five years of looking at this rate, which is not going to generate a ton of money, you know, for any in particular school system. And you have to also realize that Senator Fields, at the request of many, many people, got a piece of legislation passed for the retirement systems because the retirees very seldom ever get a COLA, which is a cost-of-living adjustment on their retirement checks. So, they wanted to do some type of a mechanism to put that into effect that they would periodically get a... get an increase in their retirement benefits. So, that Senate bill that did pass and that everyone pretty much got behind, those increases are going to be paid for by all the school systems for the teacher's retirement fund. So, there will be an increase in the employer contribution rate in order to fund these COLAs, slight coming up in increase. So, as we might see some decrease because they are re-amortizing this debt, and potentially, if they pay some of the debt down, then those re-amortization numbers are going to look a little different, a little bit better. Then, you're still going to have a slight increase in the rate due to funding additional COLAs for retirees. And where all that stands depends upon all your actuaries that are putting their assumptions in place as they crank the numbers out to see how long this is going to take and where that sweet spot's going to be. So, the bottom line is, it's not going to benefit anyone in this coming year at all. So, this was, you know, the rhetoric that was happening. So, you have this group of legislators, primarily in the House, that did not want to raise the spending cap enough to fully fund the MFP. On the Senate side, Senator Fields, who... Cleo is the chairman of the Education Committee. Well, I don't know if he's the chairman anymore since he's a Democrat, but anyway, he's on the Education... I think he's still the chair. But he did go back and pass the MFP in the Senate, on the Senate side. And then, it gets sent over to the House. Well, the House held it hostage. They wouldn't vote on it. Because they were mad. They didn't want to increase the spending cap, where the Senate wanted to increase the spending cap. So, all of this was going on, and we get to the very last day, which was absolute chaos in Baton Rouge on that last day when they were approving the budget. If you talk to many of the legislators, some of them didn't even know what they were actually voting on, because they didn't even get to see the amendments that were being put on by the conference committee, you know, as they sat down and resolved the difference. Even members of the conference committee didn't know some of the things they said they didn't know what was actually happening with it. So, we were hoping that even at the very last minute, we would get the House to pass the MFP, and they refused to. What the agreement was, instead of raising the spending cap enough to do it all, they raised it enough to fund some of the projects. So, many of the legislators got their pet projects put in for funding at the very end. But they were not going to pass the full MFP. So, what they decided to do in relation to the funding for K-12 was to say, "Okay, now, it reverts back to what you had last year. So, the formula is the one that we're currently under. And then, we will put as a separate line item in the General Appropriations Bill enough money to give the one-year stipend to the employees of the $2,000 for certificated people and the $1,000 for non-certificated people. So, that means we cannot incorporate it into our salary schedule. It will have to be separate as a one-year stipend only. And if the legislature... and some of them said, "Oh, we're passing a resolution that we want you to incorporate... we want next year's legislature to incorporate it into the MFP. Oh, we did that back in 2013. That'll work." Well, the big difference is, in 2013, John Bell Edwards was on the House Education Committee and came up with that plan. He got a joint resolution passed. He also got a... an HCR, House Concurrent Resolution, which can carry the force of law, but in it, he got written into it that the governor, who was gentle at the time, pledged... the governor and the... his Division of Administration head pledged and committed to put it into the budget for the following year. And they urged and requested Bessie to include it in that following year's MFP that they sent to the legislature. So, it's like, "We pledged to do this next year." Well, the same governor was going to be in place, the same Commissioner of Administration, and the same legislature, and the same Bessie. Well, this year, when they put it in, and they urged and requested Bessie to put it in the next year's budget, it's going to be a new Bessie Board, new legislature, new governor, and a new Division of Administration. And they can't obligate these new people to do this. So, we don't know what will happen next year. And that's the difference between what happened in 2013 and what happened this year. So, in the line item appropriation, they put in the $2,000 and $1,000 in their stipends, one year only unless all of these groups next year incorporated into the funding formula. They reduced... they were going to do $60 million for that differentiated pay that we talked about. They reduced that to $25 million. So, we'll have to figure out how much of that we're going to get, and it won't be that... it won't be that much. And, you know, we've been talking about it here. We're probably looking at teacher leadership positions, because some of these others may be iffy. It's not going to be that much, anyway. they raised it enough to fund some of the projects. So many of the legislators got their pet projects put in for funding at the very end. But they were not going to pass the full MFP. So what they decided to do in relation to the funding for K-12 was to say, okay, now, it reverts back to what you had last year. So the formula is the one that we're currently under. And then we will put as a separate line item in the general appropriations bill enough money to give the one-year stipend to the employees of the $2,000 for certificated people and the $1,000 for non-certificated people. So that means we cannot incorporate it into our salary schedule. It will have to be separate as a one-year stipend only. And if the legislature... And some of them said, oh, we're passing a resolution that we want you to incorporate... We want next year's legislature to incorporate it into the MFP. Oh, we did that back in 2013. That'll work. Well, the big difference is, in 2013, John Bell Edwards was on the House Education Committee and came up with that plan. He got a joint resolution passed. He also got a... An HCR, House Concurrent Resolution, which can carry the force of law. But in it, he got written into it that the governor, who was Jindal at the time, pledged, the governor and the... His Division of Administration head pledged and committed to put it into the budget for the following year. And they urged and requested Bessie to include it in that following year's MFP that they sent to the legislature. So it's like, we pledged to do this next year. Well, the same governor was going to be in place, the same Commissioner of Administration, and the same legislature, and the same Bessie. Well, this year, when they put it in, and they urged and requested Bessie to put it in the next year's budget, it's going to be a new Bessie board, new legislature, new governor, and a new Division of Administration. And they can't obligate these new people to do this. So we don't know what will happen next year. And that's the difference between what happened in 2013 and what happened this year. So in the line item appropriation, they put in the $2,000 and $1,000, and their stipends one year only, unless all of these groups next year incorporate it into the funding formula. They reduced... They were going to do $60 million for that differentiated pay that we talked about. They reduced that to $25 million. So we'll have to figure out how much of that we're going to get, and it won't be that... It won't be that much. And, you know, we've been talking about it here. We're probably looking at teacher leadership positions because some of these others may be iffy. It's not going to be that much, anyway. And really, that's the only money that is going to affect us. So we're not getting any increase in a per pupil. The only increase or decrease we're going to be projecting in the MFP is if you have more students and you're relative wealth according to others, you can never figure out... It's not like, well, if I get more students, I know I'm going to get more money. Or if I get fewer students, I know I'm going to get less money because it is a relative-weighted formula. And it depends on what everybody else is doing. So with that said, the bottom line on it, one-time stipend for our employees, $2,000 for certificated, $1,000 for non-certificated for the '23-'24 school year. And hopefully, we can convince the new Bessie board and the legislature next year to make that a permanent increase for our employees. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Votche, for all that information. And we do have questions. Ms. Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
With the stipend, will we do it as a one-time payment? Or is it going to be split over their checks? Is it going to be half at December or half at... What are your thoughts on how you're going to do this?
My thoughts are that we just split it up on their paychecks, 24 paychecks. So when you come in, you begin it. When you leave, you end it, instead of making, you know, payments at different times. I mean, that's my first reaction. We're going to take a look at it more closely and see how much we're talking about here and, you know, and what groups of teachers we would look at dispensing it to and how that would work, you know? All right.
Are there any other questions at this time?
So on the... Hanging down the retirement debt, how are they going to determine which district gets what? Or just across the board? Are they going to look at each district, or are they going to just...
Well, it's got a couple of things. The first way they were going to do it, and I have no idea right now how much money or how much debt was actually paid down in teachers' retirement. I had somebody tell me they didn't do any for teachers' retirement. They put it into LASERS, which is the public state employee's retirement system. I had other people say, oh, no, they did put some into teachers' retirement. I don't know what they did on the last day, and I haven't read the bill itself. But what the original proposal was, they would put the money in some kind of a fund and then decide all the school districts that paid into teachers' retirement or school employees, because we have two different retirement systems we work at. They would take a look at what your prior year's payment into the retirement system was in the aggregate. Like, and I want to say, the year they looked at for ours, because I looked at some of those numbers, this was a couple of months back. I mean, so ours was between $43 and $44 million of salaries that we had paid in on. And they would look at what each system or school, because some charter schools are in the retirement system and some are not, and that everyone then would get a proportionate share of that fund. So the fund is sitting there. You would still pay the whole amount for employee retirement. It wouldn't go down, say it's at 28% for argument's sake. And then you'd still pay your 28%, but then you would get a credit against the amount of money that was in that fund attributable to your school system or to your entity. So there's a whole lot of calculation going on with that. So they would do it based upon what your total salary was from the prior year's data that they had, total amounts that you paid in on, and proportion that money out, district by district or entity by entity.
So to give you a credit?
And you'd get a credit. You'd get a credit on it. So you would be credited against the payment you had to make. So it would reduce your payment to some extent, down the road.
Down the road.
So I have no idea. Now, I do know that when they made the compromise, they lowered the amount of debt they were going to pay down. So when the House agreed to raise the spending cap, they wouldn't increase it the full amount the Senate wanted. It was only about half of what the Senate wanted. So when they decreased that, then the group that wanted to pay down the debt went ahead and said, okay, we want to put some money into the debt so they could say they got a win on it, too. And they went ahead and cut the Department of Health and Hospitals by $100 million because they hadn't raised the cap enough to do all of what they wanted to do. And that's when the Speaker of the House got all upset. And I hear, you know, that affected us, our... Our parish in a couple of ways. Because I think ours was one of the 19 who were the hope out to not do what everyone else was asked to do. So it was a... And I don't want to speak too much about it because obviously, I wasn't there for the inner workings of what happened. So all I can see is observe what I think occurred.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Votche.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Or what I was told occurred.
So basically, Ms. Votche, bottom line is, there was no additional funding for education at all on a state level. Is that fair to say?
On a permanent basis.
On a permanent basis.
Right. There was one-time stipend money given in that $2,000, $1,000, and in the differentiated pay for one year only.
But no increase of education?
No increase at all in the MFP or in the per pupil of anything.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Moving on.
Yeah, let's move on.
Personal changes for June 2023. We have Ms. Pritchett here tonight. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. You should have the personnel changes that took place since our last meeting in your folder. We're busy in personnel right now. On the second page, you can see that we have two retirements we'd like to recognize. Shannon Clement has retired. She was a teacher at Chalmers Elementary, and we wish her well. And we also have a retirement of a longtime custodian, Camille Richard.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was...
Are there any... Just to give them a little time to...
Yeah, I wanted to give them a little time to look at this.
Read through the changes. Ms. Votche, you want to make some?
Yeah. The... You know, we have a couple of administrative appointments. The Assistant Principal at Trist Middle School, Julie Abity, who has been with us for 23 years at the middle school level. She's taught at both Trist and Andrew Jackson in math, social studies, and science. She's a mentor. She has gone through the LETAP and the TAP training, you know, through NIET. She has been the instructional coach at Trist Middle School. And the committee has recommended her for appointment as the Assistant Principal at Trist Middle School. At Marrow Elementary, Assistant Principal, it's a recommendation for Ms. Maggie Rousell. She's been with our school system for nine years. She has taught the 4th and 5th grades at Chalmers Elementary, at Davies', and at Marrow. She's been a teacher leader. And for the last two years, she has been a literacy coach, done an excellent job, very, very bright young lady. And that is the recommendation to me from the interview team. So Ms. Maggie Rousell for the new Assistant Principal at Marrow Elementary School. And then lastly, we all know that David Brissette has retired from Chalmers High School as our Athletic Director. And Mr. Warner and Mr. Dewey and Mr. Snyder have with the interview team. And they are recommending the new Athletic Director at Chalmers High School, Mr. Richard Walker. Coach Walker has been with us for at least the last 10 or 11 years. He is currently the Assistant Athletic Director. He has done a laudable job. He is... I know he was Defensive Coordinator of the football team and has served as the Assistant A.D. You've seen him at all the games. He's worked with the middle schools in that capacity. So it's a natural movement up from the Assistant to the actual Athletic Director at Chalmers High School.
Okay. Are there any questions at this time? I just want to, on behalf of the Board, recognize and thank Ms. Shannon Clement, who's retiring. We thank her for her many years of service, and we wish her a very happy retirement. And to Camille Richard?
Yes, Richard.
We thank you for your many years of service and happy retirement. Well deserved. And congratulations to Ms. Maggie Rousell, Ms. Julie Abity, and with their new appointments. And also, Mr. Richard Walker. Congratulations to all. Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Pritchett. We appreciate it. Okay, next item is Insurance Committee. Ms. Harris?
Yep. So we have 4.1, which is the renewal of excess workers' compensation insurance. And Mr. Fernandez, we'll let you take it away.
Thank you. We have our friends from Clement's Insurance Services, Richard and Timothy Clements. And in your package, you have the quotes for the renewal of our excess workers' compensation insurance policy. As you may recall, as a self-insured workers' compensation program, we're required to carry excess insurance by the state as a condition of that status. So we carry the statutory required level of insurance, excess insurance, which the policy will kick in when it reaches a certain point of retention on expenses. We have two offerings today from the carrier. They have a renewal of our current policy, which has a $500,000 per occurrence retention for $82,754 premium. The rates are the same as the previous year, previous policy, and those rates are based on our actual payroll numbers. They also have a $600,000 retention for a little bit lesser premium, $74,297, about $8,000 less. We are recommending the $500,000 retention. We feel the $8,000 savings isn't sufficient to make up for the $100,000 of additional exposure in liabilities. So our recommendation is to renew our current policy with a $500,000 retention for a premium of $82,754.
Does anyone have any questions? All right, seeing none. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we go with the administration's recommendation of $500,000 self-insure retention per occurrence. And that would be A.
Yes, ma'am.
And shall we vote on that motion? Ms. Lemoine, second.
Motion passes, 10-0.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Next, Finance Committee, Ms. Lee Bowman.
All right. Item number 5.1, request to advertise for monthly produce solicitations. Ms. Moreau?
Hi, good evening. I'm just here to ask permission to request to advertise for fresh fruits and vegetables and produce for the period of August 1st, 2023, through July 31st, 2024, for the upcoming school year.
Any questions from the Board?
I'll make a motion that we send to the full Board.
I have a motion from Ms. Lemoine. Second by Ms. Jackson. Please cash your votes.
Motion passes, 10-0.
Thank you. Item number 5.2, request to approve bid tabulations for official journal. David?
Okay. In your package, you have the results of our solicitation of bids for official journal. The Board is required to appoint official journal every year. We have one respondent to say for my voice. We're recommending that the Board select them as the official journal.
So move.
Mr. Warner, move. Any second? Second by Ms. Jackson. Please vote on your voices.
Motion passes, 10-0.
Item number 5.3, request to approve bid tabulations for painting and body repairs.
This is the results of our request for bids for painting and body repairs. We have two respondents. We're recommending the little bidder, Fidelis.
Any questions or comments from the Board?
One question.
Ms. Lom?
You said Fidelis?
Fidelis, yes, sir.
Okay. On the first page, it has car craft. Must be a typo.
Yeah, that's a typographical error. I apologize for that.
Do we have a motion?
I think Ms. Geisard have a question or comment?
I did have a question. On the paint materials, Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
So besides the labor, the paint materials, they charge by the hour as opposed to the material?
Yes, they convert it to a rate so that we can compare between the two.
So that what? I'm sorry.
They convert it to that type of rate, so that we can... An hourly rate, so that we can compare the price in between the tables.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the administration's recommendation.
Which is?
For Fidelis.
I have a second motion by Ms. Jackson. Please vote on your vote.
Motion passes, 10-0.
Thank you. Item number 5.4, request to approve bid tabulations for gas, diesel, and other automotive fluids.
We're recommending that for gas and diesel, we approve a continuation of our relationship with Fleeco or Fuel Man. And for the other fluids, Gobert Off.
Do we have any questions or comments from the Board?
I'll make a motion that we send to the full Board.
Thank you, Ms. Lemoine. Do I have a second? Mr. Warner, second motion. Can you please vote on your vote, please?
Motion passes, 10-0.
Item number 5.5, request to approve bid tabulations for paper, cleaning, and custodial supplies.
Okay. In your packets of the bid tabulations, and we're recommending the little bidder on each item, paper, cleaning, and custodial supplies.
Do you have any questions or comments from the Board?
I'll make a motion that we accept a little bid on each product that is bid.
You have a motion? Ms. Lemoine, second. Can you please vote on your vote, please?
Motion passes, 10-0.
Item number 5.6, request to approve RFP scoring tabulations for disaster recovery.
Okay. This is in response to the request proposals we submitted for disaster recovery services. This is to get a contract in place for, in the event that we had a disaster, like a hurricane or something that would require recovery services such as this. We put out RFPs. You can see the tabulation of scores on your exhibit. There were seven resp- There were seven respondents to this request for proposals. We had several indicators, which are at different point values, which you will see. The point values are seen by each vendor. And the pricing is the last one, which was worth 30 points. What we did was we took the lowest price. We took eight indicators, or eight elements, and that are most commonly used in our past experience with these type of services. We came up with an average weighted price of those elements and determined what point values they would get, with the low price getting the most points, the total of 30 points, and the others getting lesser amounts relative to that difference from the low price. And this is the result. We had a committee of three of our people, Mr. Jason Dewey, Michael Halton, who handles our insurance and our FEMA relations, and Laura Dorsey, who is our purchasing agent, who scored the proposals. And the company with the most points is Signature Group. So we're recommending that we enter a contract with Signature Group. They will only provide the services if they're needed. So this will be a requirements contract.
Do any comments or...
Mr. Fernandez, is this our company's experience?
Yes, sir. All of the companies that responded had the requisite experience. There were a couple of companies that didn't respond with the number of staff that we think would be necessary to respond to. So they lost points in a couple of those instances, but all of them seem to have the correct, the requisite experience and longevity to perform on this contract.
Thank you very much.
And this contract is just as needed, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Any more comments from the Board?
I have questions. Some questions. On the financial part of it?
Yes, ma'am.
How, I see there's a variation of points given. How, can you just tell us how that was?
Yes.
Evaluated.
Each vendor gave us a price list of the different prices they would charge for labor and equipment. For instance, general labor, skilled labor, equipment operators. We determined the most common, we looked at past experience with past contracts, the most common services that we use. We don't know at this time what an E will be, but most commonly in the past, when we called these people out, was to respond to storm damage, hurricanes, water damage, motor remediation. So we took those services and the prices of those services for both equipment and labor, and we came up with a weighted average. We looked at the most common things that we paid for most often and came, took the prices for each of those per hour or per day, depending on whether it's labor or equipment, and came up with a weighted average. We gave the low price, the low cost and the weighted average, the maximum number of points, which in this instance was Signature Group. Then we looked at the difference between the low price and the next lowest and the next lowest, and through the differential, the percentage of the difference, we determined how many points they would be awarded. In other words, we deducted points based on how far away they were from the low price. And that's how we were able to decide how many points everyone would get.
So was this a subjective?
No, that's the most objective factor in the whole thing. They give us our prices and we do a mathematical formula to come up with the points that they would be awarded.
Okay, was it based on price of the individual?
Yes, ma'am. The prices that they submitted.
Scope of work?
The prices that they submitted in their proposals.
Okay.
Give like an example. Equipment rental, for example, on these things, they are dehumidifiers, generators.
Correct. Like, for instance, we took four different types of equipment. There's two types of dehumidifiers, one we call a small dehumidifier and one a large dehumidifier. Jason could probably explain if you want more detail on that. Then there's something called a desiccant dehumidifier. Don't ask me what that means, but you know. And generators. Those are the four most common pieces of equipment that we use in the services in the past, and the most prevalent. So we took a proportion of each one of those pieces of equipment based on how many we needed and how often, and we came up with an average price for those pieces of equipment. Then we took the labor, the four most common types of labor, general labor, skilled labor, equipment operators, and project managers. We did the same thing. We came with a labor percentage. Then we took those totals and we determined that of the total cost in the past, about 70% of it was in terms of, was related to equipment, and 30% was related to labor. So we applied those percentages to the labor total and the equipment total to come up with a total average cost per day or per hour. And that's how we determined where they ranked in terms of their proposals.
And just one more question.
Yes.
So all of these scopes of work were based upon what we unfortunately had endured after Katrina?
Right. There is no set scope of work. It's just to provide whatever recovery services we need. The majority of the time when we called these companies in the past, it was to respond to hurricanes or storms. There was maybe one instance in the past five years where we had a fire and they had to come in and do smoke remediation, but the vast majority are those hurricane, water damage, and motor remediation type services. So that's what we used since that was the most common thing, and plus we're doing this basically to comply with FEMA regulations. And FEMA would come in in the case of a named storm. So that's how we determined what factors we would use in the determination.
So the RFP was a basic one with the scope?
It asked the vendor...
That each of these responded to?
Correct. Well, there was, it asked us to give us a pricing list on all their different services. It asked them to give us their history of their company. It asked us to give, asked them to give us what staffing they had on hand to respond to our emergency, should there be one. It asked them to respond to equipment they had on hand to respond to an emergency, and it asked for individual prices for those elements. And we took the most common elements that we utilized in the past to make a fair determination to compare between the companies.
And just as a background, okay? When you're looking for like a name stormed event and there's power outage, or there's water intrusion, or flood, or whatever, heaven forbid, we hope we won't experience, whatever happens at that point, in order to be reimbursed by FEMA at all, you have to have these contracts already in place, or you have to go out and immediately get something, and then you go through this horrendous process on cost benefit analysis and all that delays this forever. So what FEMA has recommended and what everyone is doing is you have these contracts in place prior to the event and hope you never have to use them, you never have to execute them. So nobody on this list, whoever we award this to, no one receives anything unless a service is provided. What this does is give us the availability of saying, when a storm hits and we need to call in a company with generators, dehumidifiers, all the equipment that we need at different sites, and the labor to make all of this happen, and we need it quickly, then we call that company and they are obligated, they have done this obligation with us, that they will come in and immediately provide that service. And it will be a reimbursable service because it's already been bid out. We've already asked for these proposals. So when you're talking about a scope of service, you can't say to a company, well, we want you to come into all of our schools, we have this many hundreds or thousands of square feet, and give us how much it would cost to do, to remediate everything. Well, that's not really what happens. If you have a power outage in a part of your parish, and is Mr. Dewey still here? Maybe if you come up, we may have sometimes a cluster of schools that we're going to concentrate on. So we've got to immediately get equipment into these three or four places and address it right away, and we need all this equipment available that we don't obviously have. And then, so what he has done, or what his committee, his group did, was look at these, and Mr. Dewey, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but looked at the last several incidents that we've had to see what equipment we most rent. What have they used? What have they billed us for? And that's how those were determined, and we took the pricing from each one of these companies and weighted it heavily toward, this was our cost over this last five-year period. Most of it was equipment rental. Some of this was labor and weighted it with those particular values. Do you want to expand on it a little bit? I mean, I'm just giving a general thing. You probably can be a little bit more...
I mean, you've explained it very accurately. It literally is, you know, roughly 70% cost as far as equipment goes, and roughly 30% cost as far as labor goes. And we absolutely targeted what were the most common and certainly the most costly items to us over the last several events. And there's definitely a commonality amongst the events, and it is, as already said by Mr. Fernandez, most often associated with water damage and inundation, whether or not that's from hurricane. In some cases, we've had tropical storms, what have you, but the same types of event. And of course, those things were looked at very hard, and it's those items that are our primary costs across the board, and that's what we factored into our cost analysis.
And I think when I questioned you, I asked you about the differential in the pay, the company that you're recommending we awarded to was by far the actual lowest rental cost in all of the specified equipment by far.
Yes, ma'am. That's absolutely correct. It was significant.
And that was heavily went in their favor. The labor costs were similar, I think. But there was some deviation.
Correct.
I said the labor costs.
Yes, ma'am.
There was some deviation, but that was closer. But the equipment rental cost was hugely different.
Yes, and when you averaged the two, it was a very clear total lowest cost. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Any more questions from the Board?
I have a question. How long does this RFP last?
It's an annual RFP, but we have the right to extend it at the same terms, should we so wish. Initial term is one year.
Okay.
But we have the option to extend, or this is a professional services contract, so we have the right to accept as long as they don't change their pricing. We already went through a process and determined the low price, so we can extend it at our will as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Comments from Mr. Belong?
One question. So we don't have to put out any money unless we use their services, correct?
Yes, ma'am. That's absolutely correct.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Any more comments from the Board?
I'll make a motion that we send the administration's request to the full Board.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Lamoyne. And Ms. Belong, second it. Please vote on your board's.
Motion passes, ten zero.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Dewey. Item number 5.7, request to approve RFP scoring tabulations for audit services.
Okay, we put out a request for proposals for audit services. We received one proposal. We sent it out to six of our local auditing firms. A few responded that they weren't able to put in a proposal due to staffing issues they were having, but we did have one proposal from Ericson Crenntel. They're an experienced firm. They've been in operation for over 60 years. They have a great deal of governmental experience. They haven't done any public school, traditional public school systems, but they have done charter schools, several charter schools. So they are experienced with the school level auditing issues that would be needed. They also had recently were awarded the contract in Tanshawo Parish. So we feel that they are eminently qualified to provide these services. They have a good record and good recommendations from their current clients, one of whom is the St. Bernard Poitiers currently. And they have proposed a three-year contract with a rate of $56,910 per year, each year, slightly more than we paid last year. We paid $52,100 to the $2,200, so it's a slight increase, but it's still very reasonable, we feel, and we're recommending Ericson Crenntel for a three-year contract to perform our audits beginning this year.
Is that the only vendor that we have?
That's the only one that responded. Others contacted us and explained why they couldn't respond. There's a lot of staffing issues in this industry right now, and they're having a lot of trouble retaining staff. A lot of it is moving to virtual rather than onsite audits. But Ericson Crenntel did respond with a very reasonable proposal.
Right, and you see, some of our requirements are they, well, from the legislative auditor's point of view, audits need to be completed by December 30th. We require, we've been asking by October and November, so we push them hard to get ours done, you know, quickly. The staffing issue, you know, we're talking about a teacher shortage. It's amazing, as we talk to these firms about them coming in, a lot of them want to work remotely. They want you to send them all the information. They want to do less and less of the onsite auditing, which I'm sure we're going to have to compromise a little with, how much prefer of the onsite auditing. It's much easier to deal with than continuing back and forth with documents. And their staffing issues seem to be very, very real as we talk to the different auditing and accounting firms across the area.
Any comments or questions from the Board?
I have a question.
Ms. Daisart?
So the firm that's represented to us in the past with our audit, they didn't put in a bid evidently and didn't, do you know, can you tell us why?
They indicated to us that they were having staffing issues as well, and they didn't think they could be competitive in their, in their, quote, in their proposals. So they declined to put in a proposal.
The person who really was in charge of our audit left the firm to do something else, and they have not been able to arrange staff sufficient to feel they could put in a competitive bid. They felt that the pricing that they would give us would be way out of the ballpark.
Wow. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
That's interesting.
That is interesting.
I'll make a motion to approve the administration's recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Belong. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Jackson's going to second the motion. Can you please vote on your board's?
Motion passes, nine, four, and one extension, Ms. Harris.
All right. Item number 5.8, for 2023 to 2024 general fund and special revenue fund budgets.
Okay, in your package you have our proposed 2023, 2024 general fund and special revenue funds budgets. There are five exhibits. The first four relate to the general fund, and the fifth one relates to the special revenue funds. The first exhibit labeled number one is the summary of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance for the general fund. Exhibits two and three are the details of revenues and expenditures. Exhibit four is a summary of changes in employee benefits, which we normally do with the original budget each year. And number five is the special revenue funds, each special, active special revenue fund that we have. The major changes in the budget, as discussed earlier by the superintendent, we have incorporated the changes from the new employee contract, which increased the salaries of employees, certified employees by 2,600, and support employees by either 1,600 or 1,300, whether they're 12-month or nine-month, with all the related benefits. We also increased those supplements for the activity coaches and directors. We increased, put in the money for the increases in the trip charges for the bus drivers, and we also... we also increased some money for substitutes, as we raised the substitute rates from $60 for non-certified and $80 for certified, to $80 for non-certified, $90 for substitutes that have a bachelor's degree but aren't certified teachers, and $100 a day for certified teachers. So, all of those are reflected in the general fund budget, as well as changes in movements in additions to staffing. And in the federal budgets, it basically displays our current expected, either actual initial allocations, if they're available, if not, it's our estimate of what the allocation would be, for all of our special revenue funds. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I have one.
Ms. Harris?
And I'm reading it correctly, that the fund balance will decrease slightly by about $56,000?
Yes, slightly. Sometimes it fluctuates like that, depending on the, the numbers, but yeah, but we still have much more than the required minimum fund balance by the state and federal agencies, which is 7% to 10% of revenues. We have a very healthy fund balance, even with a slight decrease. Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments from the board?
I have a question.
Mr. Fernandez, can you tell us approximately, I know we usually get that total percentage of salaries and benefits, what percentage, I know it's usually about 81, 82.
It's usually about 84, 85%.
It's up to 84 or 85.
It's, it's in that range, salaries and benefits, yes, ma'am.
Of the total budget goes towards salaries and benefits.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any more comments from the board? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend it to the full board.
Thank you, Ms. Belong. Do I have a second motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Lamoyne. Please vote on your board, please.
Motion passes, ten zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee Bowman. Next, we have the superintendent's recommendations. Ms. Votek?
Just to remind, we, we have published in our official journal that the proposed budget is available for public inspection. It's been available since last week, I think it was, and that at the beginning of the regular meeting, there'll be a public hearing, that if anyone has any comments concerning the proposed budget at that point, you know, that we will have that hearing at the beginning of the meeting. We have begun all of our summer programs, and I want to say that they really, really are going very, very well. We've got them at several school sites, we have elementary programs at Davies and La Conce and Marrow. There's a summer camp for children with autism at Marrow that's going really, really well. We have our science camp at the MoMA Center, and our middle school program at Andrew Jackson Middle School, and the high school program, high school, and the Performing Arts Academy this summer is going full speed, and as I think we've mentioned before, the performance at the end of the month will be 1776, so I'll be giving you some more information, so if you really want an enjoyable evening, please make sure that everyone books their tickets in advance, because I'm sure that there's going to be a high demand for those as well. So, summer's going well, and then we will begin in July, you know, a lot of our PD process with our administrators and teachers and teacher leaders in getting ready for the new school system, I mean, the new school year, and our planning process in July.
Okay, are there any questions? Ms. Votek, the summit high performance of 1776, what's the date of that?
I knew you were going to ask me, and I, can you look it up for me? Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sitting there thinking, I think it's the last week in June, and, and then I know he was talking about bringing it over, because it's 1776 and having it coincide with the 4th of July. So, it's July 2nd, that weekend?
July 2nd.
It's the last day, so it's like that last weekend.
June 29th through July 2nd.
There we go. June 29th through July 2nd.
For those.
And there's going to be performances, does it say which nights?
Yes, June 29th at 7:00. June 29th at 7:00 PM, June 30th at 7:00 PM, July 1st at 2:00 PM, July 2nd at 2:00 PM, and I think that's it.
Okay, so that weekend.
And then accelerated reading program is going on also, right? And that's at Davies?
It usually is at Davies, yeah. I think it's there.
Okay, okay. Any other questions, comments? There being none? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Who would adjourn?
There's a motion by Mr. Campbell, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Ms. Harris. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.